Miss Rice, ladies and gentlemen, the 16th Sangguniang Pandalawigan is now open for its 23rd regular session. Honorable Vice Governor Adilin F. Ellis, please sign.
The 23rd regular session of this Sangguniang Pandalawigan is now going to order. Requesting Honorable Mercy RiHano to kindly lead the invocation to be followed by national anthem.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father in Heaven, who guides the destiny of men and nations, we implore the guidance of the divine providence and the Holy Spirit to assist the task in the proceedings of his chamber that we shall be faithful in our mandate for the welfare of the people. We ask you to bless and enlighten the members of the Sangguniang Pandalawigan in all due for the common good and for the welfare of our province and the nation in general. We ask this to Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Mr. Secretary, can we call the board?
Honorable Mark Julius P. Cabalias, Honorable Daryl J. Levender, Honorable Antonio Irma Kugundeter, Honorable Bernardine O. Ismercado, Honorable Melgabal Arenkapo, Honorable Mercedes Arihano, Honorable Danilo Abel, Honorable Ismail Di Prilim, Honorable Lucelneri Edmangold, Honorable Valdomero El Impiata, Honorable Lorena Rosales. Madam Presiding Officer, with the seven members of the board present, we have the necessary coro for this morning's session.
Thank you, Saint James. With the presence of coro, we can now proceed with the order of business. The Chair declares the presence of coro. Our floor leader.
Thank you very much for the Presiding Officer. Madam Presiding Officer, I move the Pidipor, the reading of the minutes of the previous session dated December 9, 2022. I salute.
Okay, there's an option, duly seconded, for the deferment of the reading of the December 9, 2022 sessions minutes. Any objection? There is none. Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, last session dated December 9, 2022, we adopted a resolution of congratulations to Dr. Josue Victoria for being awarded during our for the grant of we have adopted a resolution congratulating the Provincial Veterinary Office of Marinduke for the able leadership of Dr. Josue Victoria for having been awarded the Government Best Practices Recognition of 2022 by the Development Academy of the Philippines. And we have with us today, Madam Presiding Officer, the staff of the Provincial Veterinary Office. And we ask that we recognize the author of the said resolution, the honorable Mark Julius P. Cabalias, to read the citation.
Requesting first, our guest from the Provincial Vet led by Dr. Victoria. So good morning po sa ating mga katuwang sa kanoong gulang may la sa Provincial Vet. And thank you for being with us. May yoong umaga. As mentioned by the gentle, by the floor leader, we requested your presence today because we want to personally hand over to you a simple but sincere manifestation of our appreciation for the honor that you and your office has given to the provincial government and to the province also. So again, last session, the Sangguniang Pandalawigan of Marinduke adopted a resolution of appreciation to pivot and for that, may I recognize Honorable Cabalias, the author of the said resolution unanimously approved by the body. Provide the read, the content of the resolution. Andito po ba si Dr. Victoria? Okay, thank you. So ang in charge po is, ang officer in charge is? Mam Veron. Sige po, thank you Mam Veron. Yes, Honorable Cabalias.
Thank you to our Honorable Vice Governor Inang Ellis and to our Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Giorgio Leva. So, good morning po especially to our guests from the Provincial Veterinary Office. We present to you for a resolution of our 322 series of 2022, a resolution congratulating the Provincial Veterinary Office of Marinduke through the able leadership of Doctors Josue Victoria for having been awarded the Government Best Practices Recognition of 2022 by the Development Academy of the Philippines, authored by yours truly honorable Mark Julius P. Cabalias. Whereas Development Academy of the Philippines associated the Government Best Practices Recognition, which promotes, showcase, and share knowledge on outstanding innovative practices demonstrated by the public sector's organization. Whereas the GPPR, or Co-Libments, the Public Sector Productivity Innovation Laboratory, under the Government Quality Management Program by capturing innovative transformative ideas, approaches, and solutions of other government agencies in improving the quality and impact of their respective services to the public. Whereas for this year, the Marinduke Provincial Veterinary Office is among those confirmed with the Government Best Practices Recognition awarded by the DAP for their exemplary services and innovations in the field of veterinary services. Whereas through this recognition, the Provincial Veterinary Office had once again proved their sincerity and dedication in providing sustainable innovative veterinary programs to the province, particularly during the period of pandemic outbreaks and calamities, which makes it worthy of such an award. Whereas the provincial government of Marinduke is truly honored and proud of the achievements of the Provincial Veterinary Office and wanted to express its gratitude and commendation to this said office for their relentless service to the province and its people. Therefore, consideration of the following premises and emotion of Honorable Aurelio J. Levender, duly seconded by Honorable Lucelneri Edmangold, it was resolved, as it is here by result, to congratulate the Provincial Veterinary Office of Marinduke through the able leadership of Dr. Josue Victoria for having been awarded the Government Best Practices Recognition of 2022 by the Development Academy of the Philippines. And so finally, the copies of this resolution be furnished to the Provincial Veterinary Office, copy furnished to the Office of the Governor for their information, adopted this ninth day of December 2022 at Marinduke, certified by James L. Solas, S.P. Secretary, and tested by Honorable Vice Governor and Presiding Officer Adilin F. Ellis.
Thank you, Honorable Cabalias. Can we give a warm applause to our partners in service? And may the Presiding Officer request the team led by Mam Leylay to kindly receive the resolution of appreciation. And si Dr. Victoria po is online and personally witnessing the awarding or the presentation of the resolution of appreciation by the Sangguniang Pandalawigan to your team. Dr. Victoria, many thanks and congratulations to the team. Mamaya po after your team receive, ay kaya ba ito magpagnagserita si Dr. Victoria? We will put you on speaker, maya maya. They will just receive the simple resolution of appreciation. Then after that, we'll request you po to share some message, a message to the obvious body on behalf of the Provincial Vet. So, okay po, but for the meantime, your team po will be presented with the resolution. At this juncture, we would like to recognize the head of our Provincial Veterinary Office Head, Dr. Victoria, to share with us a message on behalf of your team. You are now recognized, he's online, and you can be, you are clearly heard, Doc.
Yes po, maraming salamat po Vice Governor Adilin sa lahat po ng board members na present kayon. Special thanks po kay Honorable Board Member Attorney Maki Cabalias. Salamat po ng Provincial Veterinary Office, sa Provincial Veterinary team po ay lupus na nagpapasalamat sa pagkilala sa aming parangan nanatanggap muna sa Development Academy of the Philippines, Government Best Practices Recognition Award para do sa aming mga inobaisyon sa pagdilipar ng mga veterinary services sa mga kanayunan. Poganhin po na ang team ngayon ay papunta ng Mindoro para para pagbigyan ng request ng Provincial Government of Mindoro sa pamamagitan ng Provincial Veterinary Office na magsagawa ng katulad na activities na ginagawa sa Marinduke. At ito po 'yung bahagi ng Bima Ropa Ribis Eradication Initiative na hinagaya 'yung naging achievement ng Marinduke na na deep old at nairadikit ang ribis sa lalawigan. Ngayon po dahil po do sa mga initiatives na ginagawa sa Marinduke, hinawa po itong template para gayahin in original level. At ngayon po ay ito ay muli sinasagawa sa probinsya ng Mindoro, particular sa bayan ng Puerto Galera. Ito po 'yung pang-apat na taon na ginagawa namin itong pakikipagbayanihan sa mga karating probinsya. At sa susunod naman po na, sa first quarter po ng darating na taon, sila naman po ang pupunta sa ating probinsya para tulungan 'yung ating initiative para mapanatiling ribis pre ang lalawigan ng Marinduke. Labis-labis po talaga ang labi pa sa sa lahat. Hindi naman namin tinasakan 'yung mga ganitong parangan kung saan na lang dumadating. Kaya buong puso po namin tinatanggap. Maraming-maraming salamat po Vice, at saka sa lahat ng nagbibigyan ngayon.
Thank you very much, Dr. Victoria. Baka po si Mam Leylay ay meron pong gustong indagdaan on behalf of the team ngayong araw na ito.
Magapasalamat din po lamang kami sa inyong lahat, lahat po ng mga bumalot higit po sa iyo Vice, sa pagkilala sa amin pong natanggap na recognition.
Okay po, at baka po ang iba pa sa nating mga kasama na bukal ay nais sa magparating ng personal na mensahe sa ating mga katuwang sa serbisyo. Anybody from the floor? Yes, Honorable Leva?
Ang ating pong pagtupugay sa mga initiatibo ng Provincial Veterinary Office, sa paboro po ni Dr. Josue Victoria, at ito lamang po ay pagpapakita na talaga pong ang kanilang pagpupunyaqui ay di lamang kinikilala dito sa ating lalawigan ng Marinduke kundi sa bayan ng, ah sa bansang Pilipinas. Congratulation po guli and keep up the good work, Dr. Victoria.
Thank you, Honorable Leva. Meron pa pong iba-iba? Yes, Honorable RiHano? Dr. Victoria, congratulations po.
Yes, thank you po, thank you po.
Lahat po ay kami ay sumusuporta, lalo-lalo na po sa sa tulad nun na pakasipag. Nakita ay matagal na nagmagkakilala at sa iyong mga gawa'y ay sumusuporta. Congratulations, keep up the good work, Doctor.
Salamat po, salamat po. Ipapapatuli po namin ito.
Thank you, Honorable RiHano. And yes, Honorable Arenkapo, the Chairperson of the Committee on Agriculture.
Maraming salamat po, kadalang-kalam, Vice Governor. Doc, una sa lahat, kaya mumbatiin kita ng isang Merry Christmas. Ang lahat ng kababayan mo rito sa Marinduke, you make us proud. Pinagmamalaki ka namin, pinagmamalaki ka namin mga Dr. Victoria, sa iyong sipag, sa dedication mo sa trabaho, sa pagmamahal mo sa iyong mga kababayan. Muli po, mabuhay ka, at isang mapagpalang araw sa iyo. Merry Christmas po sa iyo.
Maraming salamat po, Honorable Board Member Arenkapo. Thank you po.
Thank you, Honorable Arenkapo. Meron pa pong iba? Yes, Honorable Lim?
Yes, Dr. Victoria. Ang recognition to you and to your office is already long overdue. So ayan na, ayan na po, congratulations po, Dr. Victoria, at more powerful sa inyo.
Thank you, Honorable Lim. Okay, meron pa pong iba?
Thank you, thank you.
Gustong magpahayag? So, how about Honorable Red? Do you have any additional message to the Pivot Team?
Po sa inyong lahat, kay Dr. Victoria at sa inyong mga kasamahan. Sana po ay panatilihin natin na palagi tayong the best ang Marinduke pagdating po sa trabaho. Yung lamang po at maraming salamat.
Maraming salamat po, Honorable Red. And unless any other comment? So with that, again, on behalf ng Sangguniang Pandalawigan and as partner of the executive in many programs that you are implementing, maraming salamat at congratulations ulit sa mga katuwang sa Provincial Vet. The award that you receive is really something. Kasi sa ngayon, minsan marami ng mga awards na mabilis makuha. In fact, naalala ko may sumulat sa akin, bigla akong naging Millennial Vice Governor of the Year. Eh hindi ko naman alam kung paano nangyari yun eh. Sa bandang huli may sulat ulit na maging sponsor ako nung dun sa award din ng 100,000 pesos, no? So, maraming mga usong award. Pero to be able to receive an award from a prestigious institution like the Development Academy of the Philippines, that makes a difference. Kaya alam natin na the recognition given to you by DAP is a recognition given to the province and to us all. An affirmation that we are doing right. Sometimes, something that I appreciate to Dr. Victoria and to the Provincial Veterinary Office, you usually think out of the box, which is sometimes risky. To be able to get things done, sometimes you're taking risk. But madalas, that is the sign of a leader who knows who take the risk. Kaya maraming salamat sa Provincial Vet. Sometimes the situation is challenging, but the recognition that you receive or that we receive through you is an affirmation that something good is being done by the Provincial Veterinary Office. Maraming-maraming salamat at congratulations po ulit.
Thank you po ulit.
So, salamat po. Yes, Doc, thank you, your team is excused. Salamat, wala pa kaming napiprepay na merienda man la, ano? But have our hearts with you and siguro sa ibang pagkakataon, we can still bond together. Saglit po kayo sa Office of the Vice Governor, baka may, pwede silang i-share sa inyong konti. So maraming salamat, Mam Leylay. Thank you. The Provincial Team led by Mam Leylay is now excused. Yes, Honorable Leva?
Yes, Madam Presiding Officer, for the approval and amendment of the agenda. For today's agenda, we don't have a privilege hour.
For the ambitious business, may I ask the Secretary to please propose ordinance number 1619.
But before that, requesting our secretary, representative from our secretary, to please inform chefie, skin advice attorney Fernandez?
Yes, I will, after next reading, sana matamte, I will ask for a decision.
Okay, see po, but we just requesting advance to inform attorney Fernandez, patasid po. Yes, Honorable Leva?
May I ask the Secretary to please read the title of the post ordinance? For post ordinance number 1619 entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Honorable Governor Presbitero J. Velasco Jr. to Initiate Exploitation Proceedings Before the Regional Child Court (PC) Against the Owner of Flats in Parangui Masika and Digtangin Gasan, Marinduke, Who rejected the offer and refused to enter in a deed of absolute sale with the Provincial Government of Marinduke relative to Marinduke Airport Extension Expansion Project, authored by Honorable Aurelio J. Levender, Chairperson of the Committee on Rules, Laws, and Ordinances."
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation be read for the capture of the resolution?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may move for the for the acceptance for the resolution and carrying the appointment of Mr. Michael Jordan S. Dunisio Computer Program Two of the Provincial Veterinary Office as the Corporate Administrator of the Wii Access Internet Backing Facility Account with the Powering Functions, Viewer User, Add, Amen Delete, Unlock User ID, Reset, Password, Amen for this purpose, Resolution Number 83/22. I salute.
So it's a resolution of concavance or a resolution authorizing the governor to appoint?
Inappoint na po niya.
And then, to appoint?
To appoint.
To appoint, so it seems now he was appointed.
So, a resolution appointing Mr. Authorizing the governor to appoint Mr. Michael Jordan S. Dunisio and amend for this purpose Resolution Number 83 Series of 2022.
Any second to the motion of Honorable Leva, duly seconded by Honorable Lim, Honorable RiHano, Honorable Cabalias. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is carried. The resolution granting authority to Honorable Presbitero Velasco, Governor Presbitero Velasco Jr. to appoint Michael Jordan S. Dunisio as requested and in effect, providing amendment to Resolution Number 83 Series of 2022 is now approved.
Again, Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation again be recognized for capture of the resolution?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
I do for the adoption of a resolution granting authority to the Provincial Governor, Honorable Presbitero Velasco Jr. to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the lack of opportunities for the use of link that this portal as an alternative collection channel for payment means. I salute.
There is a motion. Any second to the motion of Honorable Leva, seconded by Honorable Cabalias, Honorable RiHano, Honorable Red. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the motion is the motion is approved. The resolution granting authority to the Governor, Presbitero Velasco Jr. to enter into mo with Dan, Bank of the Philippines for use of link this portal as an alternative collection channel for payment of bills is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, again, may move for adoption of a resolution entitled "A Resolution Extended for Pangugratitude and Appreciation to Governor Almiranto Ayon Darnas and the Governor Alhute T. Garcia Jr. from the provinces of Atangas and of Arispectivli for its permitting the clarification of the share of the local government units in the national collections." I salute.
There is a motion by Honorable Leva. Any second to the motion? Any second to the motion, duly seconded by Honorable Lim, Honorable Cabalias, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus
The Chair hears none, thus the motion is carried. The resolution extending for fund gratitude and appreciation To Governor of Milano I. Mandanas and the late Governor Enrique Garcia Jr. From the provinces of Batanga and Batan respectively For distributing the verification of the share of LG's in the national collections is now approved. Can it just be included in the title after Governor will have for fund gratitude and appreciation to an adopted son?
Yes, Madam Presiding Officer, to the adoption of a Marinduke governor.
And Milano I. Mandanas of Batanga.
Madam, can we also spell out the I?
Yes.
Iko. Upon the province of Marinduke talaga po, Iko.
So please take note of the amendments. What's the next item?
Ah Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for adoption of a resolution Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2022-349 Entitled An Ordinance Amendment Section 9 of Municipal Ordinance Number 2019-216 Entitled An Ordinance Institution Rising An Efficient Effective Record Management for an E-Tracking System in the Office of the Sangguniang Bayat Municipality of WAW and Appropriating Punch there for For the implementation of as valid, operational, and within the power of the Sangguniang Bayat, Lena.
There is a motion by the Chair of the Committee on Rules For the approval for the ah declaration of Ordinance Number 22 2022-49 of the Municipality of WAW to be declared valid and operative. Any second? Duly seconded by Honorable Caballes, Honorable Rianno. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the motion is carried. The motion, the resolution Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2022-349 of the Municipality of WAW is now declared valid and operative And within the authority of the Set LG to announce. How many items?
No, sayo, keep in, keep in.
So with defer consideration of proposed ordinance number 16-19?
So can there be a common motion based on the? Until until further discussion in subsequent session, whether it be other in the first session?
So with defer consideration of the proposed ordinance number 16-19, I'll take part in discussion whether on the regular or expectation session.
There is a motion to defer further discussion on the item, duly seconded. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The particular item is now being deferred until subsequent session.
We now go to the Madam Presiding Officer, as manifested earlier, the Director of the Governor requesting for authority with regards to the memorandum of agreement by between the provincial government of Marinduke and Department of Transportation is being withdrawn by the local chief executive.
So with that, is there be a, there can ah Okay, as manifested by Attorney Fernandez as relate during the meeting with him that the proposed the request for authority for to enter into a a memorandum of agreement with DOTR and the PJM is now being withdrawn. Thus, let it be put on record that the this particular communication has been withdrawn by the local chief executive through the legal officer.
Another item from the messages and correspondence from the Governor is the Supplemental Budget Number 5. May I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation?
Honorable Caballes is recognized.
Madam Presiding Officer, formally move that we adopt a resolution approving supplemental budget number 5. The total amount to 26,282,486 pesos and 14 cents, Madam Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the approval of supplemental budget number 5 of the province of Marinduke in the amount of 26,282,486 pesos and 14 cents. Any second, Madam, duly seconded by Honorable Rianno. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, the resolution number? The resolution approving supplemental budget number 5 of the province of Marinduke. The amount of 26,282,486 pesos and 14 cents is now approved. Ah let it be put on record that items included in supplemental budget number 5 are all based in already approved resolutions of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan which had been previously scrutinized and studied. Ah thus, the approval of supplemental budget number 5 ah has been approved at once.
Yes, Madam Presiding.
Kaya we are just putting it on record that these are already based on approved resolutions.
And inasmuch as Madam Presiding Officer, supplemental budget number 5 is under general appropriation ordinance. May I move that it be transferred to the item for third and final reading later on, Madam Presiding Officer?
Such item, such resolution already approved for second reading is now being transferred to ah the portion for third and final reading.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ah ah move for a resolution expressing the deepest sympathy and condolences of the provincial government of Marinduke to the bereaved family of former Vice Governor and Mayor of Torinhos, Tomas Nariko Pizarro on his side and a timely demise, as authored by the Vice Governor and authored by the members of the board.
Ah this has been ah introduced by all members of the board. Ah and with that, there is no need for second, then there is no objection. The resolution number 2022-131 A resolution expressing the deepest sympathy and condolences of the provincial government of Marinduke to the bereaved family of former Vice Governor Tomas and and the former mayor Tomas Nariko Pizarro on his side and a timely demise is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Energy and Public Utilities for the sponsorship of a resolution?
Honorable Lim is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ah Mr. Pro Leader? Madam Chair, as an option of the the Committee on Energy, are there is the proposed resolution and ah it reads a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor, President J. Velasco Jr. To meet, discuss with the Department of Energy, DOE, and other relevant national government agencies on how the province of Marinduke can avail with the privileges stipulated under RA 11646 of the microgrid system, Madam Chair.
There is a motion by the Vice Chair of the Committee on Energy, duly seconded for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor, Presbitero Velasco Jr. To meet and discuss with the Department of Energy and other relevant national government agencies on how the province of Marinduke can avail the privileges stipulated under Republic Act 11646 or the Microgrid System Act is now approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ah Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for the adoption of a resolution?
Yes, Honorable Caballes?
Madam Presiding Officer, I move that ah I move for the adoption of a resolution declaring that appropriation ordinance is number 2 and 3 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz be declared as valid operative within the power of the Sangguniang Bayan, Lena.
There is a motion from the Chair of the Committee on Appropriation for the adoption of a resolution declaring the the appropriation ordinance number 2 and 3 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz to be declared valid operative and within the authority of the Municipality of Santa Cruz. Any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Bokal Enkabo, Bokal Rianno. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The the motion is carried, the motion, the resolution is approved.
That's all for the Mrs. Pardalee portion of today's session. We don't have an assigned business for the proposed resolution and ordinance for third and final reading. May I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for the final approval of the supplemental budget number 5?
Yes, Honorable Caballes?
The Presiding Officer, as the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, ah I open ah deliberations for supplemental budget number 5.
Is there any deliberation?
I would check already for third and final reading.
I move that supplemental number 5 of the province of Marinduke be approved on third and final reading.
There is a motion from Honorable Caballes, duly seconded for the approval for third and final reading supplemental budget number 5. Any objection? The Chair hears none, thus ah the resolution approving supplemental, thus supplemental budget number 5 of the provincial government of Marinduke amounting to 26,282,486 pesos and 14 cents is now approved on final and third reading. Third and final reading.
Okay. Thank you very much for the PEI and CNA and to the airport of Bokal Bokal Caballes and Bokal Tresmakuka.
So what's ah?
Ah Madam Presiding Officer, I move to adjourn until January 13th unless otherwise a special session has been called for ah specific purpose.
So the session is adjourned until January 13th, but without prejudice, holding of special sessions may be necessary.